Thank you for attending. This is our Thursday, November 7th regularly scheduled Board of Selectments meeting held here at the Town Hall, Hebron, Connecticut. I ask if we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next set, the section of our agenda is for public comment for any of those people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. Is there anyone who wants to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to our next, which is our Good to Know. Andy?
Yes, we have a participant for Good to Know on the agenda. Tonight, we have our Hebron Business Spotlight and Public Service Announcement with us representing the Hebron Interfaith and Human Services is Mr. Rick White. Rick, come on up. Stand and face the cameras and you can tell us a little bit about your organization.
As most of you know, as Hebron Interfaith is nonprofit, we get nothing from the town or federal for what we do. We have one part-time employee. She can't, couldn't be with us tonight because she's at a mentoring class. It's something new that's starting up. Those mentoring classes, they're gonna sit down with clients and they'll go over budgets and probably recipes, job search, a little bit of everything. All of our money comes from grants and donations. We do have a fundraiser. That's the Christmas Bazaar, which should be coming up in about another month. And yearly mail, which will be going up this week. That's our biggest contributor. Food, we get from local donations. They have a box at Ted's where people can put food in. And some of the churches have a box where they donate food and they bring it to us. We have our local food drives put on by the school and the Boy Scouts. Those are the biggest ones. Most of our food, we get from Food Share up in Bullenfield. They'll deliver for $200, so we go off in trucks and trailers and get it ourselves. They charge us 17 cents a pound. So if somebody buys a can of food that costs $2, you get one can that weighs about 15 ounces. For that same $2, we can get quite a bit of food. We go up quite often to Food Share. vegetables, milk, and government commodities, we're not charged for. That's offered to us. Right now, we have 94 active families coming to us. And that's hard to believe for being in Hebron, but it is. We have 10 to 12 other families that only come in when they're in need. So that's sporadic. They might come in there once every three months, once every six months. So whenever they think they need it, they'll come into us. Out of that 94 families, we have 39 seniors, 127 adults, and 46 children. Another thing that just started up within the last few months is what they call open Anybody can come into that. They don't have to be from Hebron. They come in, they sign up for it, and what they get there is government commodities. That is free to us. And out of that, we have 143 families signed up. Out of that 143, 110 are seniors, 172 are adults, and we have 118 children. Now, those 143 families, they don't come in every month. They may come in every other month or every three months, whenever they think they need it. We average 65 to 75 families every alternate, which is twice a month right now. Every other Tuesday morning, across the Town Hall here at the Red Barn, the big parking lot, we have a mobile van from Food Share that comes in. And we've got one of the best ones going right now. We'll go through over 100 people in about 20 minutes. What they do is when they come in, there's three stations on each side of the truck. We set up the tables, put the food on the tables, have somebody keeping the table supply. These people bring their own bags and they come down one side and up the other side. And we go through, well, we'll go through 100, over 100 people in 20 minutes. Average is 110 to 120 people each time. And that's open to all. About three years ago, Food Share was, had a little questionnaire they wanted filled out. Didn't really mean much, but it's something that they wanted to know. And I added a question to it. What town are you from? Two years in a row that we had that survey going, we had 14 different towns coming to the truck. We also had a, started up a couple of years ago, three, four years ago, what they called Backpack Program for the elementary schools. Right now, we have 23 students signed up for it. What they do is every fall, we'll buy a backpack and they'll be numbered, so the same kid gets the same backpack every, every time. And Monday, Wednesday, Wednesday, we have a volunteer go around to the schools, elementary schools, picks up the empty backpacks. Thursday, we fill up the backpacks with, it has to be under 10 pounds of food to keep the child going through, through the weekend. Friday, we have a volunteer that takes the backpack back to the school, to the nurses' station, and the kids pick up the backpacks there. It's a pretty good thing. It keeps the kids supplied for food for the weekend. With the middle school and high school, that's a little more difficult because it's regional. What we've been doing is we'll take snacks and stuff up to the nurses' station because kids will go to the nurse during the day saying they're hungry. So now the nurse has something to give them. They don't have to take, buy something out of their own pocket. So we try to keep them, when they need it, we try to keep them supplied with that. And you can tell with the weather outside, winter's coming. We help people with heat, not necessarily out of our own pocket. We help them fill out the application for Operation Fuel. The Lions usually will give us X number of dollars to go towards fuel, so we'll distribute that to the needy as, as needed. We also get money from the Salvation Army for fuel. A lot of people get shut-off notices for their electricity. We try to mediate with CLNP, have a source now, to get them on a program where they can pay a small monthly fee and then after so much time, then the rest of it's forgiven. We try to help them out with that. In the past, we've had people come in that needed to go to a doctor, but they didn't have gas to get there. So we'd issue them a gas card so they could go get gas and so they could make it to their doctor's appointment. We try not to push that too much because then everybody's coming in. We've also mediated with landlords on rent, with people that fall behind on rent. We try to mediate with them to get them caught up. And we're trying to help people to help themselves. We've had a couple of occasions where somebody out of high school's got going to MCC in Manchester, but they don't really have the money for all the books and stuff, so we will put out money to help them buy books. We've done that on three, four occasions. Christmas, the Fourth of July, and Easter, we usually try to do extra. Christmas, we try to get toys, so everybody has a toy, the kids. So that's coming up again. Since July, each month, we've given out an average of 13,000 pounds of food, and that equates to 10,833 meals. Food Share says 1.3 pounds equals one meal. Approached Andy in the past and said that if they can think of anything, if we're not doing it, we can help them with towns that will do our best to do it. Any questions?
Yeah, what is, if someone is considering going to people for help, what are the parameters? Are there income levels? How would somebody, how would somebody know if they qualified?
Theory is if they walk through the door, it takes a lot, but people walk through the door and say they need help. So automatically, they will get help. Usually, if they're on food stamps, qualify for food stamps, then they qualify for us. But you always got that gray area too, where somebody may be getting food stamps, but to us, they might be considered like a working poor. They still need help. That's what we're doing.
You were talking about some of the other programs that you will assist people with, and you were talking about employment.
We'll help them fill out resumes, search on the internet for jobs. Unfortunately, there's no transportation out this way, so trying to find a job is kind of narrow, especially if they don't have a car.
Rick, just for the people that are watching on camera, could you tell them where you're located?
We're located on Pendleton Drive, 20 Pendleton Drive. It's basically behind Finnegan's Pub and Restaurant, with the second building on the right going down Pendleton Drive.
And that's recently refurbished, right?
Yes.
What are the hours that you're open? Just so people know.
Hours of open is usually every other Thursday from 9:00 to 11:30, but she's there almost all day. So if somebody comes in after the hours, that's okay. Wednesday mornings, she's usually there. Then Thursday, she's there from 9:30 to 11:30, then from 3:30 to 6:30. Today, we have volunteers there, well, they've gone home by now, but we had volunteers there because she was attending the mentoring class. Starting up.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks for inviting us.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks for all you do.
Good program. We've had a request from our cameraman to make sure that we keep our microphones as close as we can.
Okay.
And we have enough mics now for everybody, so. It took us 12 years, Brian.
This one doesn't work.
Okay. Our next area is appointments and resignations.
Yes. First, under Appointments and Resignations, this is per the Charter, the reappointment of the Town Attorney. In the packet, under Item 5, it states, Section 805, Appointment of Town Attorney. The Town Manager, subject to the approval of the Board of Selectment, may appoint and remove the Town Attorney who shall be an attorney-at-law, or a firm, or attorneys-at-law admitted to practice in the state, who shall serve for a two-year term of office commencing the second Tuesday following the town elections. So, here we are. I reviewed the Town Attorney's performance along with his price, and we have a lot of open things he's working on. So at this point in time, I feel that we should continue with Holler and Sage and more so Ken Slater as our attorney, but he also has other attorneys that have been assisting us throughout different phases. So there's a motion there.
Okay. Move that in accordance with Section 805 of the Hebron Town Charter. The Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the Town Manager's reappointment of Holler and Sage LLP to continue to serve as Town Attorney for a two-year term of office commencing on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, to continue until Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, so be it. Okay.
Thank you very much. Next, under Appointments, Douglas Library of Hebron Board of Trustees resignation. Attached is a letter from Julie Vesci, resigning her position from the Douglas Library Board of Trustees effective October 21st, 2019. The position is designated as an association position on the Board of Trustees.
Move that to Hebron Board of Selectmen. Accept the resignation of Julie Vesci from the Douglas Library Board of Trustees with regret and thanks for her service.
Hearing the motion, any discussion?
I will add in there that Julie was a very valuable member of the Board of Trustees and volunteered to get involved in many activities every other day. So it's a lot.
It's gonna be missed.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, so be it. Okay. Thank you.
Good job. Old business. Mr. Chairman, under Old Business, Item A, Approve Town of Hebron Employee Handbook of Personal Policies and Procedures. This has been reviewed by the Town Manager's Office, Town Attorney, Town's Labor Attorney, Town Staff, and hopefully tonight, it was a goal that was given to me as a Town Manager, this board will approve that senior packet. You had a first glance at it. We've sent all the comments we got back from the different entities, and this is the final draft.
It looked good to me. I'm, as you all know, I was asking for an update of the last couple of years, and I went over this, and then I went over the latest version that we got a couple of weeks ago, and this looks good. The, I had a list, as I said before, of some items that I wanted to see covered. They're in here, so I'm happy.
Okay. Anyone else?
I went through it, all was fine. It was all good.
Great. Good job.
Thank you. Thank my staff. The staff did 99% of the work.
Thank you, everyone.
I'd love to. Sure.
All right. Pursuant to Section 1003 of the Hebron Town Charter, Personal Policies and Procedures, the Board of Selectmen hereby adopts the following resolution. Whereas, the Board of Selectmen desires to provide a well-considered set of personal management practices for all employees, except as agreed to in separate collective bargaining agreements. And whereas, the proposed Employee Handbook of Personal Policies and Procedures has been in development for multiple years and through multiple revisions with the advice of Labor Council and recommendations made by independent employees themselves. Now therefore, be it resolved that the attached version dated November 7, 2019, of the Town of Hebron, Connecticut, Employees Handbook of Personal Policies and Procedures, be and hereby is adopted as the official Personal Policies and Procedures of the Town of Hebron, and subject to such revisions and as may be made from time to time, inclusive of health and other insurance benefits and retirement plans.
Hearing the resolution, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, so be it.
Dan, I'd just like to say, seeing tonight is the night for approving the Town Attorney and finally getting the personal policies done. That was a large undertaking, but more than that, just the, these resolutions. Donna does 99% of the resolutions in-house. We're not paying the Town Attorney to do those. If you could just reflect on that resolution alone, how well that flowed and how precise that was, I think we should give Donna some credit for the work that she does that is not recognized, and we're not hiring an attorney every, every other meeting to do those. So that's a big bonus, and that, that really read well on a, on a very important piece of, or a policy or procedure that the town's gonna have for some time now. So thank you, Donna.
Yes.
Does a great job at all those resolutions. Makes it. She writes a lot of them.
Well, thank you.
Well done. Well done.
Well-deserved praise to you.
Yeah, we're not, we're not running to the Town Attorney for every little thing.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. B, Item B, Gilead Hill School Water System. So it says, "This discussion of the Gilead Hill School Water System at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting and requested to continue the subject on the agenda." Here we are.
So have we heard from the Board of Education about?
Other than...
The letter.
Saying that they received the letter.
Yeah.
That's the notification that I got.
So that last meeting, they said that they would, they hired a lawyer and consultant, and in the letter, they said that, that they would be doing an assessment of the data.
Yeah.
So let me just, I have some thoughts. I've, I've put them in a presentation, just so it'll be quick. I put together all the data from Hebronell and from Gilead Hill School. Obviously, we're replacing the pipes from Gilead Hill. I'm just gonna express my concern. I don't know if I'm gonna do the motion or not at this meeting, but...
You're replacing the pipes at Hebronell.
Hebronell, right. But we've, when we finally got the data from Gilead Hill, we found out that there were, there'd been 15 samples taken the last 10 years, and there'd been concentrations of 9.9 parts-per-billion and 12 parts-per-billion found in those, in that, in that, in the water. It's a small amount of data, so, Peter, do you want? Okay. So let me just go through this, and we'll go through the issues. First thing is, lead is now on EPA's radar like nobody's business, and I just wanna quote something from the President's Task Force from December 2018. "Lead exposure to children can result in multiple sources, from multiple sources can cause irreversible and lifelong health effects. No safe blood level in children has been identified. Even low levels of lead in blood have been showed to affect IQ, ability to pay attention, and academic achievement." And then from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, just recently, "Because no safe blood level has been identified for young children, all sources of lead exposure for children should be controlled or eliminated. EPA set the maximum contaminant level for lead in drinking water at zero because lead can be harmful to human health even at low exposure levels. Lead is a toxic metal that is persistent in the environment and can accumulate in the body over time." And then the third thing is, the 15 parts-per-billion, which is our regulatory threshold that remains, it's called the Lead Copper Rule, is not protective of, of health. It was never developed for that. It was developed as a, as a practical method to manage lead in, in industry and in, in the world, but nobody thinks it's protective even of adult health, never mind children's health, which is what we're dealing with here. So I'm gonna start with just my conclusions. First thing is, we have a wealth of information now from the Hebronell experience. We've taken data over the last 10 years, and we've watched that system deteriorate. And so we know how the deterioration goes. I think we, quite, one of the questions is whether the Board of Selectmen should participate in this process, and I do think pretty strongly that the Board of Selectmen should participate. First of all, the pipes in the school and the infrastructure are our responsibility. We own the pipes. The town owns them. And then there are other issues, like the, the after-school program, that is, I guess, is not part of the school program, because when the superintendent came here and talked to us about the SROs, if you remember, I asked, "Well, should we have an SRO for the after-school program?" And they said, "Well, that's your responsibility. It's not our responsibility." And so then also the weekend programs where we have kids playing basketball. There's people in that school drinking water all the time, and I think we're responsible. I'll just give you a case. If you're a human health risk assessor, you'd be looking at, for example, what if a pregnant woman went in there and started, and drank that water? Or what if a woman with an infant or a person with an infant went in and filled their, their bottle to give them water or some sort of formula? You wouldn't be, you would not, never fill that, that bottle with water that has 12 parts-per-billion lead in it. So, conclusions, we need to sample immediately, and you'll see that I come up with at least 20 samples, four duplicates, to know what's actually going on. It may well be that, you know, that concentrations are lower, but we don't know... It may well be that, you know, that concentrations are lower, but we don't know, and we haven't sampled since 2017. The data needs to be interpreted not just from a regulatory threshold, that is, the fifteen parts per billion, but also in terms of total exposure to children. And we need to take that data, like, as we did with the Hebronel system, and determine if the system is, is failing, how it's failing, and maybe if it's amenable to, to chemical treatment, which I suspect it is. And as we go through it, you'll see that, I think if we had looked at, or if we had looked at the data fifteen years ago at, at Hebronel, and applied to orthophosphate system, we might have actually mended the system so that we wouldn't have to replace it. I, I don't know that, but it's possibly... The third thing is, for right now, is we should probably be flushing the system. Mr. DeRozier told me the other day that he thought it was EPA guidance that all schools should be flushing their water. That means turning on the faucets in the beginning and the end of the day, or at night. It's a very low level of, of effort. What it does is, is water in contact with, say, a fixture that has lead in it, it will leach overnight, and so you'll get higher concentrations. If the water's running, you get lower concentrations, and I, I have to believe that interim measure will have a huge effect out there. And again, it's a low level of effort. So, I just, you know, the elementary schools that, in our, in our, in our town are kinda similar. They both, well, except for the fact that Gilead Hill was built in nineteen sixty-seven, at least the first part of it, the first part of Hebronel was built, built in nineteen forty-seven, but as I looked at the data, it became clear to me that the sources at Hebron Elementary School are actually coming from the nineteen sixties addition. So, you never know where it's coming from, and they're both old enough that, to have that kind of problem. Okay, I'm not gonna go through the timeline, 'cause I went through it last, last time, last week, three weeks ago. I will say, I've been, I've been pursuing this since February of this year, when we went to see the state, and the state actually made me aware, this was a meeting for Hebron Elementary and getting the reimbursement money, or the matching funds, or whatever it was. And they told me that Gilead Hill had high lead constant, or they told me that Gilead Hill had hits of lead, I didn't know that. And I tried to get the data, I finally got the data by foring it. So, why is this important? Well, it, it's important in terms of decision-making, how we make decisions. And, you know, I look back at some of the, the letters that were sent out, decisions that were made by the former Superintendent, and I have no criticism of what he did, because he's, he's following the Lead Copper Rule. But it was interesting to me to, to look at, in a September of 2018 letter, where we had had one round of clean samples at Hebron Elementary School, and he was anticipating the second round. And if it came in clean, that is, below fifteen parts per billion, he was gonna turn the, the water system back on, and kids were gonna consume the water. Well, as it turned out, one sample, only one out of twenty, was over the Lead Copper Rule, but it was screaming hot, it was two-hundred-and-ten parts per billion. It was that, only one sample, that stopped us from turning the water on again. The problem there was the interpretation, in my mind, the interpretation of the data. It had, we should, well, when I looked at it finally, what I was looking at was not just, you know, how high the concentrations were, but the pervasiveness of the hits, the percentage of hits, the percentage of times we would detect lead. And even in the last sampling, we were getting, you know, fifty or sixty percent detections of lead. So, thank God we didn't turn the water back on, and thank God we're removing the pipes, but let's learn from that experience. So, Gilead Hill, as I've said, has had three rounds of, of sampling. If you look at Table, Table Two, since 2017, they had five samples in 2011, five samples in 2014, and two, five samples in 2017. The average concentrations were two, three, and two parts per billion. The high concentrations were five, twelve, and nine point nine. Now compare those to what happened at Hebron Elementary. In 2009, very similar data, you know, ten samples, two-point-nine parts per billion average, and fourteen parts per billion maximum. And then in 2013, we start getting maximum concentrations that are increasing. So, we have five-hundred-and-twenty-one in 2013, which is hu, I mean, that's just huge. What, what I think has, what happened was, that as we went along, we were getting dissolution of lead out of the brass fixtures, and, and out of the, some of the solder in the pipes, but at some point, we started getting chipping at Hebron Elementary School, just from the deterioration of the pipes. So, the, these are, are extremely high concentrations, I mean, we should, I mean, it's hard to, not good to have. What we need to do, in the same way that we looked at Hebron Elementary School, is keep an eye on, on Gilead Hill, to make sure that the pipes are not chipping. And the only way to do that is to sample. And so that's why I think we should be getting out to sample now, this year, this month. Otherwise, from a regulatory standpoint, we don't have to go until, sample until, until next year, we sample every three years. Five samples is not enough, we need to be doing twenty samples at least, to give an idea. And, and like I said, I, I don't think it's asking too much to, to examine the interim remedial measures that, that we could be putting into place. So, and like I said, EPA has recommended flushing, and I would just hope that the Board of Education would, would hear, and that we could, we could begin that program.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I understand, and I, I realize, and sympathize, that this is something that's very near and dear to your heart.
Yeah, it is.
The bigger issues, you've done a lot of research. I am hoping that the Board of Education will take these recommendations, and take this research, and act on it. The issues that we have, first off, there, there are a few. It's not within our legislative ability to tell them what to do within their school, and that's set by the state of Connecticut. And we have to operate...
We have, I bet you...
It's on.
Okay.
We have to operate within the boundaries as set forth by the state. The water does come in within what the state says is acceptable. I am not smart enough to tell the state that they're wrong. This is where individuals who have much higher levels of, of knowledge and training in this, need to go to the state. But we, as an entity, cannot take on that potential liability. You know, every time we sign as a, as a selectman or whatever, it's being perceived as it is the board. So we have to be very careful and very cognizant how we disseminate our questions, our information. You know, a perfect example is even though we do, you know, letters to the editors and as an individual, people still look at us as, you know, a, a selectman, or a Board of Finance, or whatever that hat that that person is wearing. So again, it's, it's something that we have to be, you know, cognitive of, and...
Yeah.
...cautious on how we approach this. As I say, it is a tremendous amount of extremely good data. You know, what you're saying with the flushing just seems to be such a simple thing to do. But I also grew up where, when I left the bathroom, I turned the light out. Ah, we have to have automatic lights, because nobody can turn the light out. You know, it's, so, but, yeah, that's, that's, those are my concerns, and I don't believe that this should end up, or, or stay as our agenda item. This, I'm hoping will stay on the Board of Education's top-of-the-piled list to address. And now we have a new board coming in, and I am very hopeful that they're gonna take these recommendations and these concerns very seriously. But I feel that we have a responsibility to allow them that chance to prove themselves. And it's their legislative responsibility, as set forth by the state.
Okay.
So, let me jump in here.
Yeah, go.
There's, there's obviously a problem, and, and without knowing the full history, I know I've heard presentations over the years when they've had issues with water at the elementary schools, and I'm not specific on what they were, but I know that there was flushing going on, et cetera. So I'm not gonna pretend to know the history, but I know I've heard that they've tried to remedy different situations over the years. But what, what I perceive as a taxpayer, as a citizen, a human, is there is a potential threat that is real to the kids in our community. And anybody here in this community can challenge the respective authority, board, administrator, for answers and possible resolutions. And I think that's where, as I said in, in the other meetings in closing, boards and administrators need to be working closely together, not adversarially, just, we're gathering data, we're trying to do our best within our purview, but for the good of the community. In this case, the whole community, like John just referenced, anybody can walk in and fill a cup with water. So, that's what I hope to hear going forward, not sitting behind this table, is that the boards are working together to solve this problem, and I know that there's no reason we wouldn't want to solve the problem. There are regulations out there, whether or not we go with them, or better them, is, I think, the, the decision of the people sitting at the respective boards and commissions going forward. So, I would urge the, the new boards to get this to the top of the table, right at the top of their agendas, and address the issue, gather the data, put it out, so that we, as taxpayers, can figure out what we wanna do with it going forward. It's not an adversarial issue, this is just common sense, and let's get the facts on the table and make educated decisions, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. So, the question of what our role in this is a good one, I think. And if we don't have a role, okay, you know, I'll pursue this as a, you know, as an individual or citizen, but it seems to me that we do have a role. Could we get a decision from our lawyer to say what our responsibilities are, but also, if for example, you know, somebody had a complaint, if they felt, you know, that we had, the town had not done everything they could at Gilead Hill, I suspect that we would be the first ones that they sued. And so that says to me that we do have a responsibility. Otherwise, I don't know who's, who is looking at the pipes really, or who's taking care of those kids after school, or the kids on the weekends. But like I said, if, if our town lawyer says, you know, this is not, this is not for you guys, okay, then it's not for us, so...
I could, if I, if I may, I can make a suggestion as the Town Manager. I don't think we're there yet. I think if the whole board wants to employ me to, and John, to draft a letter with, with the board, the whole board's suggestive, if, or recommendation, to look into this and, and let us know if they, if there's something that they, that we can do or help. I, and I'm not an expert on this by any means, but I'm pretty sure Wayne DeRozier is the person that is listed as the person of the, in charge of the water, so it, he's their employee, falls underneath them. But it's one town, there's two boards working for the same common goal. I don't believe that the Board of Ed would wanna do anything that would harm children either. So I think a suggestive letter at this time, before we, you know, I think even take the second step or third step to go to the attorney, I would just draft a letter along with John, with the whole board's blessing, and send that off, and see if there's something we can't come to an agreement on, to look into this, a little bit more than what the state standards or EPA standards are, if, if that makes sense.
I'm satisfied with that.
Yeah. Sounds like a good suggestion.
You know, again, I think we all, and as Brian alluded to, or stated, we all want to help to create a solution. So with that in mind, I think, let's see what a letter does. And as I say, I also want to give the new board a chance to show what they can do also.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah, there's going to be four new members, and one of the remaining members has only been on a month.
Right.
So, you've got, you really have a whole new board up there. Letter sounds good to me, isn't it, Steph?
Well, Andrew, again, the wisdom of Solomon, it's a very great, good, good idea.
I think that's a start.
Yes.
And then we'll let them know that it's a concern, and we wanna partner with them on a solution, and see what the response is.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for all that, that work.
Yes.
Donna and I learned several years ago about Spocky Batris, and now we're learning about, which is mold, now we're learning about lead, which...
We thought it was a new pump.
All right. Yeah, we, yeah, for sure. Okay. Update on the Connecticut Water Company and access agreements. So, the Town Manager will provide an update at this meeting. So moving forward, the Connecticut Water Company met with us, they met with the residents of Ridge Road, which I already explained at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting. Since then, they've met with us, us being the town, with all the representation of the water company that covers this region. And they are moving forward with the permit to the state to add the new wells to increase the amount of gallonage available. So that is almost finalized and heading to the state, that's one. The ten, twenty-five, fifty-year plan is almost done. They're putting, we saw a draft, which they're not releasing yet, but we're working with them to tweak some things. So that's good news, they're keeping their word on that. Thirdly, they are still going to try to move forward and looking to add more water from the Ridge Road town-owned property. So that's, that would help with economic development. And then lastly, for this report now, they are also in the plan, but under their access, looking to look at a parcel down on the Amston section of town near the Aquifer.
Okay.
And that's, looking to look at that now, not waiting for the plan. So, we definitely gotta move them forward, we definitely are trying to increase the gallonage for new businesses, and it's gonna be an ongoing thing that we're gonna have to continue to work with them, but that's what we're doing, and it's a lot more prevalent than it was before, now that we realize there's a problem. The other thing that's gonna be coming in front of the new Board of Selectmen would be some best practices on irrigation to try to save some of that gallons, that's just, you know, and that's gonna be, not only statewide, nationwide at some point, but it, it's just good best practices to, you know, alternate days and times and stuff like that. So we have a couple model ordinances that were sent to us, so when we get rolling, we'll stick that into one of your agenda packets or review, and we'll see if that's something the Board of Selectmen wants to move forward with, I would recommend that.
Okay.
So that's the update on the Connecticut Water.
Got a question.
Sure.
So if, if they're looking to the south end of town for additional water, and it needs to go somewhere where it's not, who absolves, who eats the cost of that?
So if someone down there needs water and it's not readily available?
Mm-hmm.
There's a couple options.
Well, if, if they, if they drill a well down there for additional...
Well, if, if they, if they drill a well down there for additional, um, you know, quantity.
Yeah.
There's already one.
Right.
If they drill another one, they would run it through that, I would think, 'cause there's some purification.
They would add it to the system so it gets filtered.
But if the, that, then off of that, where it currently goes, needs to go somewhere else for economic development?
Right.
Who absolves that cost?
It would be a combination of Connecticut Water, the town of Hebron, and the person looking to, um, do the build-out. Obtain the water.
Okay.
Developer.
Thank you.
Okay. And the other old business.
Saying nothing at this time.
There are none. New business. In your packet, we do this each year, it's the two thousand and nineteen committees/commission reappointments. There's, uh, no action needed at this meeting. It states the following are appointed terms which will expire December second, two thousand and nineteen. Each person has been contacted to determine their interest in being considered for reappointment. Attach as to policy regarding reappointments. The reappointments will be placed on the November twenty-first agenda for action. And that's just a list of the people that we've... We're still waiting to hear from Donna. And that's typical, so we'll continue to try to, um, press that. There, I think you said something in.
I did.
Yeah.
I would like to be reappointed.
How does that not sound?
I have a big project ahead of me.
Make our sewers great again.
You can tell it's his last meeting. Okay, moving right along. Consider scheduling special Board of Selectment's meeting. So in your packet under seven B, uh, it reads, "Consider schedule special Board of Selectment's meeting for Tuesday, November nineteenth. It has been customary for the newly elected board to conduct a brief meeting immediately following the swearing-in ceremony to elect a chair and a vice chair of the Board of Selectment. Alternatively, this business can be conducted at the start of the first regular scheduled meeting of the new board on November twenty-first as well." Now, in conversations I have with Gail, at least today, uh, I think Gail's looking to follow suit with what we normally do and have a brief meeting after.
Yeah, it only took a few minutes and we've, what we've done in the past, so.
And then we go and enjoy food.
Right.
Yeah, that's, okay.
So that, just so for the public knows, at the first meeting following each biennial town election, the Board of Selectment shall fix a time and place of its regular meetings and provide a method for the calling of special meetings. At the meeting, the Board of Selectment shall choose one of its members to be the chair. So I...
For the nineteenth.
Well, definitely the nineteenth, but I'm hearing you wanna have a...
The meeting, the nineteenth.
Okay.
And will that be, just so we know how to prepare, just for the chairman and vice chair for, for everything that is called for? The procedures, the calendar for next year, for everything?
I would, I would recommend just the chair and vice chair.
I would go with just the chair and vice chair.
The calendar and the like should be with the, with the, at a regular meeting.
With the newborn, yeah. So is that?
Sure and sweet.
That's a consensus?
Seven thirty, Donna.
Yep.
Um... Immediately following the swearing-in.
Which is at what time?
Oh, seven o'clock.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, okay, just wanna make sure.
But everybody shows up at that, so, you know, it'd be...
It would be nice, yeah.
Well, I'm saying, all the other people that got elected. It's not just this.
Right, and, and family members too, so.
You can show up too.
I, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the draft agenda for the November twenty-first. There, there it has, um...
Yeah, the only thing would be that we would have the, uh, chair and vice chair, so three would be handled prior.
Yep, yep. Right, yep. So is there anything else that you see that you wanna change or add at this time, or we'll just do that as we get ready to go to the twenty-first?
What I'm looking for is at this meeting, would we need... Okay, okay, it's, okay. Thank you.
You good?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it's, it's not on the back, it's on the next page.
So just clarification, so Board of Finances meeting that evening, and we were inviting Board of Selectmen and Board of Ed for a follow-up for that, um, conversation in October about the budget. So we were gonna invite these guys, I thought we were gonna do that in the, at the library.
On the nineteenth?
On the twenty-first. Our next Board of Finance meeting is the twenty-first at seven. And in our first agenda item, we were gonna have to join, we invited all the, the boards to continue the conversation on the budget.
Alright.
So I was wondering if that was gonna be in the library, like the last one?
Yeah, it's in my calendar, we did do that.
We could change that, we could change it. Right now it's listed as, as, um, here.
No, we can change that to the library, that's not a problem. What time is your meeting at?
Seven.
Okay.
So we talk that out for half hour, and then you guys, yeah, and we'll go through the rest of our meeting as well.
Okay.
Alright, good, thanks for bringing up Dave. You good, Dan?
Yes, I'm just writing.
Okay. And the other new business? Going once?
Please.
Go on. Town Manager's Report. First, I'd like to start off a little letter that I received today, so the Board of Selectmen are aware and the public. Uh, it's addressed to me. "Hi Andy, the new sidewalks, especially the brick walk along Church Street, look great. The members of St. Peter's Church all feel this project is one that was well-done and a major improvement to our church, property, and general community assets. The contractors, town officials, and engineering support staff all did their very best in minimizing disruption and keeping everyone safe during construction. We're especially appreciative for receiving improvements made to alternatives of a longstanding water issue at the entrance of our parking lot. The town planner, the town engineer, and the DOT represent, representative worked on our behalf to make this a reality. I am coordinating our church's buildings and grounds functions, and a question has recently surfaced about maintenance of the new sidewalks. We would like to know who is responsible for mowing grass, snow removal, and/or general maintenance, namely, is this the property owner's or the government's responsibility?" Which I will answer that, but it's from, uh, Jack Gasper, who is, uh, a member of the St. Peter's Church. But it's a that-a-boy, and I'll answer the second part, that, that the maintenance of the sidewalk belongs to the town. And I'll, I'll relay that to him, but I, I, I wanna echo his sentiments. We've gotten a lot of, of verbals since the first written.
And I've seen people walking it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Wow.
I thought I saw a woman with her babies, but when I got closer to the stroller, there was two dogs in there. So, I thought that was cute. Okay, uh, Town Manager's Report.
With her babies, in case you didn't know that, Andy.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. So, um, after the EDC meeting with the Board of Selectment, we came up with a list of goals. Mike O'Leary and I took our show on the road, and we met with CME at their office in East Hartford. We had a, a productive meeting and expressed how we wanna move forward with the new recommendations on branding, marketing the town, and gave them, uh, a list of things we wanna see. So they're formulating that, and I hope to get that back shortly. Neil Amway also met us up there for that meeting, so I thought it was very productive, and it was guidance that I think they needed. So we'll see how that shakes out. And we sat down, and I sat down with the people from the Views magazine, so if you're gonna get any articles in, it's, now's the time, it's getting late, so, uh, we're accepting, uh, articles. Please get it to us as soon as possible.
Is, are they still allowed to go in, or is it over and done?
I think we're done.
That's what I thought, yeah.
We're done?
Think so. Okay.
That's it now.
We have to wait for some results on things, so.
Right. Exactly. But we sat down, and we had a good talk, and we understood, we had some, uh, complaints, not complaints, but, uh, some concerns, and, and we addressed them with spaces and font sizes and how we can work better together. And they were very open to, uh, our concerns, and we think we came up with a, a plan moving forward. Um, we once again, uh, assisted the American Legion and an Eagle Scout. We moved the Batson Rock back over to the Ram property underneath the flagpoles, or just adjacent to them where I think it should belong. Uh, for the people that don't know, Mr. Batson was, uh, a Vietnam vet, and one of the only ones that was, um, killed in action and didn't return back to Hebron. So the story to be told about the, the rock is when, uh, I think it's Jimmy Batson. Uh, when Batson was a student at Ram, he had made some sort of comments as an athlete on the field to the coach about that rock, and said, "Wouldn't that make a beautiful monument at some point for somebody?" And, um, in passing, well, the coach remembered that, and then when Mr. Batson did not make it back to Hebron, they commissioned that rock to be a plaque, uh, for his monument. So there's an Eagle Scout, uh, project, they re, they're gonna redo the plaque. The rock was moved with Public Works and the help of the American Legion, this week, earlier this week. And, uh, the plaque's being redone, and that should be a big, uh, ceremonial presentation. We'll let you know when that's gonna, gonna happen, so that's kind of a neat thing.
That's a great project.
So I already told you about Connecticut Water moving forward with the plan, still working, we're still working on a solar project that takes of, you know, the devil's in the details, there's a lot of stuff that we have to work on in that, but we continue to really go through that with a fine-tooth comb and back and forth. They're a good company, but they have their goal set in mind, they wanna move forward with the project, and we wanna make sure we, we move forward with the best project that best benefits Hebron, and, and we don't just put solar panels on the ground because we need a new roof, the logical thing would be, let's put a roof on before we put them on there. So we're, we're working with them weekly, uh, so that's okay. It's, it's, we're willing to do it, it's a worthy project, so we're still on that. We hired a new person for the Parks and Recs, that's the person that's gonna be shared with the DPW for the snow plowing. Uh, that took place this week as well, so that's just in time. We had a kickoff meeting this week with the DOT for the project on the Route sixty-six and the Wall Street intersection, which is gonna incorporate new signalization, a turn lane into your, uh, plaza where your employment is, not your plaza, where your office is. And, and, and pad crossings, uh, upgrade, so. It's been a long time coming, so we sat down, we got the funds, and we're moving forward with that. That's, that's a big, big thing.
That's great.
Yep. And that was almost all, I had just had one more thing, I, at this time. You know, as the town manager, Hebron, I'd like to thank Clara O'Brien and Brian O'Connell for their time and service on the Board of Selectment and working with me as the town manager, I really appreciate it. So, good luck in your endeavors, and I think we'll be calling you back. Don't run away from time to time, they maybe recognize you in a more appropriate way, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danny.
I'm gonna go, Clara.
It's been great serving with you. And it's gonna be different having, not having you here. You know, your areas of expertise are gonna be very, very deeply missed. And, uh, you know, Hebron will survive, but you still may get a phone call. We still have your number. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say, uh, as a new person, serving with both of you has been really, um, you know, a great experience. I think the way you guys conduct yourself is, is just so good. You both found areas to help the town, Clara on WPCA and other places, and obviously, Brian with the, uh, land acquisition, and, uh, you both made a huge difference, so thank you.
Sounded like a moment of silence there for a minute. Lost words.
Count, count your blessings, you've just got two Irish people to shut up for a while.
Alright, Dan, I'll turn it over to you, uh, consent agenda.
Okay, uh, these are items that are considered routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And tonight, we have the October eighth, two thousand and nineteen special joint meeting minutes, and the October seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting minutes, and then the tax refunds as listed. So, does anybody have? I kinda read them over, and they look pretty concise.
Looks like I did marketing and I'm okay.
Okay, so hearing no discussion, uh, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And again, it would be the approval of the minutes of the October eighth, two thousand and nineteen joint meeting, the October seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting, and the tax refunds as listed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, so be it. Okay, beautiful. With that, we have our liaison reports. Starting at the top, John.
So, with the EDC meeting, um, the one thing that I think that came out of it, a lot of good things came out of it, but, um, just a suggestion I want, hopefully, the, the board will think about. They're gonna come up with a pitch for the town, like an elevator pitch, like a small business that everybody knows. So they, when they talk about Hebron, they're selling it, people are selling it. It gets back to the, uh, the marketing survey where, uh, it was recommended we get six economic ambassadors. So I, one of the suggestions I had was that we extend We Are Hebron to training these economic ambassadors in one or two sessions. Have to think a little bit more about it. So, and that segues into We Are Hebron, and Gail, I'll, I'll talk about it also. That ended last night with a, a real, with a bang, I have to say. Uh, I think we had, well, we had fourteen, was it fourteen, Gail, that, uh? Fifteen.
Seventeen participants. Brother, how many showed up regularly?
Fourteen last night.
Yeah, the, the, the attendance was phenomenal. People were, showed up virtually to every meeting. And the evaluations for every, all eight sessions were, were excellent, over the top. I mean, just with suggestions and, and, and last, the evaluations yesterday for the entire We Are Hebron were, you know, I just, I think heartfelt, you know, gratitude, that people really didn't know a lot about the, the town and the government, and, and they're so happy to have that. So, um, so that, that, that worked out well, and, and one of the suggestions was just to extend it to, you know, to other parts of the town, not in the same, the eight sessions we have now are plenty. But, um, right? Yes, it's, it's plenty. But, uh, they, they, they had some other suggestions, like, uh, we should, we should, you know, be talking, have another thing about churches, businesses, whatever, um, which is, I suppose, possible, we'll have to think about it, but...
It could be done at a different...
A different, different time, absolutely.
Someone was talking to me about it, says, "Don't tag it on to the We Are Hebron."
Right.
But do it at another time of year as a one-shot deal for each of them.
Right, abso- absolutely. And also, bring them back as alumni, and so that we get more and more, uh, you know, feedback, but... And then, you know, the Hebron Elementary School water system, that's a job in itself, I, I, we meet, I, I think we meet every week. The contracts, I, I think we'll get bids on November fifteenth. Been a lot of revision, a lot of talk. we'll get bids on November 15th. Been a lot of revision, a lot of talk. I don't think we have news until the 15th or so.
No.
Yeah, so.
Hopefully no more addenda.
Thank you to that committee. They're doing yeoman work.
Okay, Clara?
Let's see. CXYI have nothing. Board of Finance, I don't think the last meeting. WPCA, no. Lebanon has got their meter fixed.
Can you say that again, please?
Lebanon has got their meter fixed, but they have not given us a digital readout to prove that it's really fixed. So we asked for a report to see that it's fixed, and we haven't received one yet. We are meeting next week, so I'll find out if we did get a report from Lebanon. But as far as my emails show, I don't have a report yet that says that meter is fixed and working.
Doesn't sound fixed.
They're afraid they don't want to show the numbers.
As everyone knows, the vote passed for the sewers, so we will be starting our project in the spring, and we'll be busy over the next probably 10 years. You know, with prep work for the second phase and everything else, so. But it's something that's definitely needed, and I thank all the voters that did vote for the sewer system so we can get it up where it needs to be and continue on with economic development in the town. So thank you, everyone, for voting for the sewer system.
Okay. Brian?
Open Space met a week or so ago, and we're, we discussed the grant that the town had received for the connection airline trail toward the center of town and looking at options. So that was the majority of that meeting. Going forward, I see, you know, I said I'm not sure where it stands with myself, so they're going to have organizational meetings at some later point to figure out where they go from here. And I just want to take a minute to say to the public, I think it was great that the sewer bonding and the additional paving project monies were authorized. Those were valid, solid projects. It's going to be good for the infrastructure of our community. And to Carla and the numbers, small-town democracy at its purest, it was very clear that the people still want to vote for the town clerk, and I thought that was pretty cool. I was probably on the other side of the fence, but that's fine with me. It's what democracy is all about. And just want to say thanks to everybody. It's been a, it's been a long, I don't quote the Grateful Dead, long chain strip, but I will.
You've had some great quotes through your tenor.
Well, you know what, what I did, it's just comes from the heart. It's all, it's all good for the right purpose. There's no agenda. It's to make Hebron better. And I've worked with quality staff across the board, without a doubt. We've got some phenomenal people that work here in Hebron over the years, working with your friends, neighbors, et cetera, new people. It's just been a really great experience. And I implore, when the thought of We Are Hebron came up in the training, I knew that that is a, just a wonderful thing for people to get involved, just to break the ice, to see if they're, answer questions or if they want to get further involved, instead of just walking in cold turkey. Because if you're going into the world of politics, if you will, and to an elected position, you really should have some background. And it just helps. It makes it smoother for you, and you make better decisions if you're informed. So it has been an honor serving with all of you and over the years, well, all the other folks I've had the pleasure of working with. So, thank you.
The Hebron Board of Ed, they haven't met since we had our last meeting, but last night, the superintendent and the board chair of the Hebron Board of Ed presented at the We Are Hebron Leadership that John was talking about. And they gave very good presentations. The attendees were very pleased to understand how our schools are working. The Commission on Aging will meet next November 13th, and at this time, the winter heating assistance applications are being accepted, as well as the Medicare signups. The Douglas Library. Tomorrow was the Association of Connecticut Library Board's Annual Leadership Conference. Our library director, along with members of the Board of Trustees, will be attending. And that will also include me, as I'm the president of ACLB. The library has two new tech pieces available for the public to use in-house. One is a scanner, which will actually, you'll be able to use an open book on it and not have that page bend that you usually get. And so any personal papers that you're trying to preserve, that you can call up and make an appointment to use that. They also have a sewing machine if you need one for some repairs and the like. And the library has a new app called Acorn Catalog. From that, at home, with your library card and its number, you can access your account. You can view the catalog. You can place holds and do many other things. All that just from your library card at home.
Gail, did the senior center do the flu shot program already? I know it was postponed.
It was postponed, but I think they've done it now.
Okay.
Okay. With me, Historic Properties, there was an Eagle Scout program. You've seen people out here by the watch tower, the observation tower, and they've been painting it and doing repairs and bringing that up to snuff. Again, coming this, oh, I say this this spring, is the Rosie the Riveter, which is going to be here. And we are one of only a few towns throughout the Northeast that are being honored with the Rosie the Riveter plaque. So that's, it's good news. It's very good news. And in fact, actually, this is one of the last few observation towers in existence. What they were were towers that were built during World War II, and local communities would have people staff those towers around the clock, watching and looking for any type of enemy aircraft for any kind of an attack on our coastline. And, you know, it was a dedicated front here at home to support the men and women overseas who were doing the fighting over there. So we still have, I believe, Mrs. Porter is still around.
Marilyn Porter?
No, there's a couple, there's a couple of people who actually served in that. So it's, you know, and she said, "I hate it every second." Because, yeah, it was such an important thing, and what if they made a mistake? What if they didn't make the plate or if they, you know, the wrong plate? It was just, just every day I went home, I was just so relieved that nothing happened tonight. Had that. The Fire Department, they have their Thanksgiving dinner for the seniors. That'll be coming up. Anybody shine up or sign up with Sharon at the Senior Center, and that'll be coming on, I want to say it's the 24th. It's coming on right near Thanksgiving this year, but Thanksgiving is late. So that's always a great time for the seniors. So other than that, I think that's it. With no further ado.
That's it. Just the Ram Campus Improvements has been submitted to DOT. DOT came back with some comments, so I, hopefully they're minor in addressing that, and they'll get that out to bid, to make sure that that's ready to go when the end of the, end of the school year. So that's, we're waiting to hear back from DOT. We made comments back, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Your last chance.
You want me to make the motion? I will make a motion to adjourn.
She did too. That's always.
I didn't know Clara had already.
All you can do is five last minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.